Before we start tonight, we're going to have an invocation. Reverend Bill Lohr is here to give that, and we're going to have the pledge. So with that, I'd like everybody to stand. I'll get to lead it.
.......................................
Reverend Bill, I was handed a note tonight that Mike Winter, who's president of the county council, his mother fell in Indianapolis, and she's really having a rough time in Indianapolis Hospital. And her name is, let's see, somebody help me.
Helen.
Helen, would you please remember her in your prayer?
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this time. We ask that you would be with this town council as they do the business of the city, that you would help them to do it efficiently and wisely, and that as they make plans and do different things for the future of our town, that you would be with them. We do pray for Helen and ask that she would not be hurt too badly, but that the doctors, the nurses would be able to take care of this situation, and that she would be returned to her health as soon as possible. And we will ask all of this in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Call the meeting of the city council for October 20, 2014, to order. Our first order of business will be roll call.
Councilwoman Rish, present. Councilwoman Weber. Councilwoman Shomol.
Present.
Councilwoman Knobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Let the record show, five out of the seven council people are present. We have a forum, and we can do business. Our second order of business is to welcome all of you here tonight. We appreciate everybody coming down. It looks like it's a lengthy agenda, and we'll kind of move through it as swiftly as we can. Now, the reading of the amendments of the last meeting, October the 6th. What's your pleasure?
I'm going to accept the amendments as they were given to.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we accept the amendments as they were sent out. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is, you've got a little drawing like this in your packet. John, if you want to go up to the podium. Down where workyards used to be, the building was tore down. On the west side, there's ten parking places. John and chief counsel are proposing that we take six of those places, or take the ten and divide them into six, and make six handicap places there. There's no handicap places for people that ride the train, and when we have Polar Express, it gets pretty hectic down there. They have to walk a long way to get on the train, and so we are asking you to consider making those six. Also, when they ride the train on weekends and other times, those handicap places aren't really needed. And it's just a way of con, as well showing courtesy to our out-of-town visitors that come in. We've never had that done before, but John came along with it, and we think it's a good idea, so Board of Works passed it today. It's a traffic ordinance, so you have to pass it in order for it to become an ordinance. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is that, one paper says permanent, one says temporary.
We were going to do temporary, and we found out it would be difficult to do temporary because they beat on weekends. Sometimes they have trains during the week, they have Polar Express, you know, three nights in a row. It'd be hard to go back, and we thought it just as easy to just make them permanent, handicap. I'm sure that if the train's not running and people park in the handicap on a regular day, the police would be lenient with it. It's basically made for the train.
You want a motion on this?
Yeah, we got an ordinance, pending ordinance 3159.
I would like to make a motion that we pass pending ordinance 3169.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yep.
I gave any discussion. Anybody out there in the audience have a problem with it? Okay, this is a traffic ordinance, so on first reading, considering pending ordinance 3159, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, so we can consider pending ordinance 3159 on third and final reading. On suspension rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We can move forward if you like.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3159 on third and final reading, adding six handicap places to the west side of that market street, just down there by the depot. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Got it done. John, thank you.
Thank you. Wish our board was this...
I will have the city street department get that ready for you.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll have it ready by the time Polar Express starts, even before.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, tell them how many people rode the train Sunday.
Sunday, we had 560 people on the train. It was a combination of the Wild West train and Fall Fowleage, and we actually had to turn a few people away.
Wow.
And that was a record. That was the most we've ever hauled. On the Polar trains, we hauled a little over 400 each trip, twice a night. So there can be as many as a thousand people through the depot on these nights.
Does anybody, everybody know what the Wild West train means? We got John Wayne down the track that holds it up.
It's not Cowboys' Vineyard, it's just Cowboys. They ride the train, and they put on a skit, and they do skits down at the other end when they get off, and so forth. When we started this, we didn't, we were questionable, you know, but it's been a huge success.
Everybody know what the Polar Express is? Takes off with the book. John, we appreciate you, and we appreciate the train.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a tax abatement public hearing here tonight. I think if it's okay, we'll do the public hearing on B and C both at the same time. We'll have a public hearing on resolution 2014-35 and 20-2014-36. First one is on real property for Stance, and the second one is on equipment for Stance. The figures that you see there are the estimated figures of the new equipment. If they bring the jobs here, it would be the improvement in the building. The abatement would not be that much, because if you figure that in at 3%, it comes to around $210,000 because they hit the caps. So you can kind of figure in your own mind, it amounts to about $2 million in tax over 10 years. Remember, that's only if they bring the new jobs here. If they don't bring the new jobs here, stays like it is. This is not on old equipment or the old part of the building. I'm going to open this up for a public hearing, where we can have discussion. Who would like to start off on the public hearing for the Stance abatement? Anybody? Looks so sad. Anybody out there want to speak about the abatement? Economic Development Director Dan Parker, do you want to speak on the abatement?
Sure.
You can either be for it or against it. Or you could be kind of lukewarm and...
Well, I'm for it. Purely to help us in this situation, Stance. And without going into a lot of detail about what's going on, as the mayor said, this will come into effect if we get those jobs that have been promised. If we don't, it's a moot point, it means nothing. So my hope is that you would pass this tonight, so we can go forward with those additional jobs, and also show them that we want to keep them in economy.
I think it was well said. Thank you so much.
Don't run off, Dan. Dan, don't run off. Man.
Sure, right here.
I was ill last meeting, I wasn't here. And I'm not upset with the mayor, nor Dan, I like Dan. But this situation with Stance, I don't know what's going on. Three years ago, Stance came to the mayor in EDG. We had an executive session with the city and the county, and we pledged a million dollars. Then I read in Indianapolis Star, I don't know if this is true, I read Indianapolis Star, that for the past year, year and a half, Stance has been negotiating with Michigan. And I read in Indianapolis Star, this, somebody from Stance, or HIG Holding, whomever it was, was talking about how wonderful Michigan was, and very business friendly, which is great. He didn't mention that Connor Tucky gave him a million dollars. Like I said, I'm not upset with you, I'm not upset with Leonard, everybody's trying. But, you know, and you brought something up, and don't take this personal, it's just your position. You said, without going into great detail, what you could discuss. My situation, Fran Shomol told me this seven years ago when I came on council. Awesome responsibility, Tom. So what do you mean? He said you're spending taxpayers' money. Now, I wasted, whatever you want to call it, voted for $6 million to a company that apparently has no credibility. And now you're coming back with this, I'm just confused, Dan. Not mad at you, you understand it.
And you have no reason to be mad. And I respect your opinion. I don't know, I think maybe no credibility's a little harsh. I would say that...
Wait just a minute. Again, I, you represent, I understand, but I represent these people.
And I do too.
I represent the taxpayer. We spent a million dollars of their money, these people said, "We'll be here eight years." And then, now, they're still going to be here, or what?
Well, that's the great thing about America, they have the freedoms to not follow through with that deal. And there are clawback clauses that we can put into motion that would allow us to get our money back. I don't think we want to do that. I think we want to do what we can to let Stance know that we appreciate them, that we want them to stay. And I don't want to make any harsh characterizations about them and their methods of doing business. I'll leave it at that.
Dan and I have spent, since December the 13th last year, we have worked weekly, and I mean weekly, with the company. And I don't like some of the things that companies have to do, and what they do. We stole the company from Indianapolis, Minnesota, and I'm sure Minneapolis, Minnesota didn't like us for what we did. We gave all kinds of benefits to get them to come down here. And there's people after our companies all the time. We're dealing with another company here in town right now, it's just as tough. That's the name of the game. Do I like that game? No, I don't like that game. This abatement you're talking about tonight is only an abatement that would take place if they bring another 125 jobs here, plus what's already here.
Guaranteed for how long?
Yeah, there is not a guarantee on it yet.
So they could come and bring them for a month and then take them out?
No, that would have to be negotiated when the decision's made.
And given the climate that we're in right now, we would certainly put some good stipulations in that agreement.
My issue, Dan, and I'm not beating you up, like I said...
There's no problem.
Anyone, if you just pick the newspaper up, look on TV, all across Indiana, America, companies are taking communities to the cleaners. And again, I have to speak up, I feel, for the citizens of Connors.
And I do too, and I'm one of those citizens, paying taxes. I don't like it either. But we are between a rock and a hard place here to try to save those jobs. I don't want to see another factory leave Connors now.
Well, there's 250,000 people there tonight that's depending on that for their living to pay their house payment, their car payment, and raise their kids. Besides that, the money that is spent on that payroll over there, if that goes six times, you're talking about six or seven million dollars a year that Stance brings into the city of Connorsville. And, you know, we don't like the game, but we've got to play it. And we think we've played the best hand, because if they went up and decided to leave, they owe us almost three-fourths of the $1 million back, and they won't get this at all.
And there's state clawbacks too.
Yeah, oh, there's a lot of state clawbacks.
We've looked at all that.
We...
We're putting the best face on this that we can, and trying to preserve those jobs and get the 125 as well.
We had all the top officials from the state here in the last couple of weeks. I personally talked with the governor on Tuesday, he is behind us 100%, he's working with us. Nobody likes what we're going through, including the state, but they, we have to do it. We have to sweeten the pot as sweet as we can to try to keep it and add more to it.
Well, I guess my issue is, and again, I'm not beating up the mayor, nor I'm beating up you either. We have a couple of companies in this community that ask us for nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? Nothing. I guess the old saying goes, "I'm between a rock and a hard place." But I just see the issues of the major corporations that have strong communities out to drive. Oh, I said my piece.
I do have a question. This is all on new equipment, correct?
New equipment and remodeling.
Okay. Then I got a question here on this resolution 2014-36, the first paragraph says, I'll skip the little part there where it says whereas and all that. It says, "As amended, as for the abatement on tangible personal property taxes attributed to new manufacturing and technology equipment installed between the period of March 1st, 1983, and December 31st, 2016, in the economic revitalization area and whereas." So is this for everything back to '83?
No. Isn't that for the revitalization established?
It has nothing to do with name. It just, it's the new equipment that would be brought in after this is passed.
So why does it got '83 in there?
I think that talks about the revitalization, once it was earmarked as a revitalization area.
In 1983?
Yes.
Revitalization area in the statute, allowing this to be done. It started a period of time where what you could be done.
And this is for equip, this is just stating this for equipment?
One's for equipment, one's for...
Right. Because if you look, the other one, it doesn't have that in there.
It was established at a different time.
Okay.
Like, we only had it established probably three or four years ago on commercial property like stores, businesses. Up until about just a few years ago, you couldn't do an abatement on that, now you can.
1983 makes it look retroactive. It's not.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I was concerned about.
The state of Indiana is really considering doing away with product tax on all business equipment. They almost did it last year, and then they left it up to the county to decide, and it's up for grabs again this year.
I've got a little bit of a problem with nobody from Stance showing us enough respect to come down here and talk to us about this. When More Precision wanted an abatement, they came down here and talked to us. They showed us exactly what they were putting in, exactly how many jobs, and asked for it.
The big companies don't do that. They hire a consultant, and they have a consultant that works with us, and we've been working with him. We have met directly with the Stance people on several occasions, but they all hire consultants. If you remember when Wazetta came in here, they hired Jay...
Where's the consultant?
He's been here. In fact, I think we talked to him today. This is the way it's done.
They just want us to vote to give them all this, and they don't want to come and talk to us.
You certainly have a right to vote against it if you want to.
And Leonard, and like I said, not to beat anybody else, but it comes like in 2008, when General Motors and Chrysler went to Washington, and the president of Chrysler and the president of Motors, they each flew in their $50 million Gulfstream jets, and they were begging for money, or hand up, whatever you want to call it. That's the frustration. That's where frustration...
And the difference on that, Tom, was survival. This is not Stance's situation. Stance has got a situation where if they want, they can pack it up and go tomorrow. It's not a survival situation like Chrysler or...
Well, it's not even really Stance, it's HIG Holding is what it is.
They don't own Stance.
Yeah, they're worth about $800 million. They don't even know we exist. They're a conglomerate with Polynesian joint venture from South Korea.
They bought it on bankruptcy.
Yeah. So I'm just, again, and I understand you're trying to do your job, and I'm not trying to be negative, but it's friended reminded me, seven years ago, we're responsible for the city's money.
And Tom, you're not saying anything we haven't hashed over, I don't know how many times, behind the scenes, the conversation you're having tonight with us in public is some of the same conversations we've had in private.
I had the same conversation we're having with the governor. He stated much of the same things you're stating, you know. It's the way we do business today. People are after our companies, they're good companies, they're after them. Michigan is desperate, they're very desperate. They have empty buildings all over up there, and they're desperate.
And they give cash?
They give cash.
That's all they do, is give you...
The state of Indiana doesn't give cash. We give edge credits, tax credits, and abatements.
And training credits.
Training credits.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Can we take both together? Can we take both these together?
We can take them both together or separately, which would you prefer?
I move to accept resolution 2014-35, tax abatement for Stance on the real property at Stance, and then the tax abatement to, for the resolution 2014-36, the tax abatement for the equipment at Stance.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
You have a motion and a second. Mayor, the 2436 should be the amended version. It is.
Yes.
It is, all right. Well, they added some to the amount, and I want to make sure that was noted.
Yes, they went from $5,400,000 to $6,000,000, to $6,900,000.
And these two figures are not the figures that will actually be abated, because if this is passed, this hits the caps, way above the caps. And so if you take 3% of that, it wouldn't be that much. I figured it today, and I didn't bring it in here with me.
I'd love to say something.
Go ahead.
Something I said, I think, last meeting was, and we have an upcoming resolution about tax abatement compliance, I mean, we have, you know, a safeguard in place, and they have to meet the criteria before it even gets to us.
Right.
Period.
Right. That's what we're going to look at tonight on all of our tax abatements. And like I say, this is not, this is just, this will be, if it's passed here tonight, it's passed. It allows Dan and I to go forward. This is what we're offering with the state project. If it's not passed tonight, then we don't have that. It's a tool that we're trying to use. When the decision's made, that's when they'll get it. If they don't do what they say they're going to do, they don't get it. So this doesn't mean we're doing it. This just means that it's available if they decide to come here and bring 125 jobs, which would boost us to 355? Okay. That's, the town, the people are after us. They call it retention, retention. Anyplace you go, it's called retention. Don't lose what you got, because it's hard to get someone else to then take their place. So this is just a tool that the state gives us to use. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I need to close the public hearing before we go. Would anybody else want to speak? I'll close the public hearing. That's on a different issue, huh? Yeah, we can't until we get to public forum, okay? Okay. We're just with this abatement right now. Okay. Any further discussion up here? We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shomol?
Yes, I'm voting for it, because on all abatements, I figure if it doesn't happen, we don't, we wouldn't get it. So I think abatements are important, it's a tool that the state has provided cities with to try to encourage improvement and added employment, so my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Knobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
What's the number, secretary?
Four to one, four ye, four no.
The rule is four to one, you have passed the resolution 2014-35, 2014-36 on the tax abatement for Stance. Resolution 2014-37, the abatement for clients. Now, this is where we go into all of our machine, all of our companies being compliant. Each year, we go out and we check to be sure that they are compliant, and then we bring this report to the city council, and prepare this resolution. It's all there before you, I'm sure that you've had this since Thursday or Friday, you've had an opportunity to read it. Fran, would you like to read just the company and the number of years of...
Boy, sure. Like Sapa, they went into effect in 2007, is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay. There are two from Sapa, both in 2007, and they have increased their employment. In fact, there are 15 active abatements, and there are 13 that show improvements in employment. One stayed the same, and one lost a few employees. So I really think the general abatements do work. Okay, continue on with Thiatool, 2005, and Thiatool had one in 2011. HNE Machine had 2005, and also one in 2011. Mac Machine, 2008. North Park Cinemas, 2006. Stance has two, both in 2005. One's been completed. The first one is still active, the second one has been completed. Persigen was in 2006, that's complete. Power Rail, 2010. Dr. Yarion's Building, 2011. More Precision Machining, 2013. Reed Hospital and Care Services, I'm not certain there's a date on that one, and we've had two of Lake Innovative, they were county, and that building has been sold, so I guess they're no longer in effect.
Right. I can report to you tonight on Sapa. We're showing current 151 jobs, just since the report was made. I talked with Sapa this morning, there's 162 jobs up there today.
Awesome.
And they got a big sign out hiring. And I'll say this, on behalf of abatements, if it wasn't for the abatement, there wouldn't be a movie theater here today. The abatement made the movie theater come here, and that abatement is gone.
Why do we not have current jobs on the top three?
We do have.
Who's up there?
The top three.
Because they're completed.
No, no.
Oh, okay. So they, that was their proposed?
Right.
And they met that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And Sapa proposed 62, they're running 151, and I'm telling you, they're running 162 this morning. Most all of these, with the exception of one, is way above what they said they would be.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would you be able to elaborate later on about Sapa?
You want me to talk about the problems we're having?
Yeah.
I'll do my best.
Maybe we have a good outcome.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, anyway, if you want to tonight, I'd like to pass this resolution, which basically states, and we're saying, that all of the abatements we have out there are in compliance. This report took a lot of work to get it up to date and to get it ready for you, and we feel that there are... we feel that they're all up to date. They're doing their best, and under the present work conditions, it's tough to keep going, and you can see what abatements have done for us, so.
You want a motion on that?
Yeah, I need, I have to.
I would like to make a motion when you pass Resolution 2014-37.
Second.
A motion to pass the tax abatement compliance Resolution 2014-37. Any discussion? No? Please, and we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
You have passed that unanimously, so that carries. I have a police reimbursement from telephone, $261. Excuse me, it's going into telephone, $261. That should be easy, that's a reimbursement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept Resolution 2014-38.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2014-38, receiving $261.21 back into Police Department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. We have a pending ordinance here. I asked you last week if you would allow me to have a public hearing to put a new roof on the street department garage and add $2,100 to police equipment. And you gave me permission, so I will open that. That at public hearing has been advertised. Any discussion on pending ordinance 3155? Your Honor?
Yes. I was absent last meeting. Will they be able to complete this by winter, David? Okay.
I talked to them, I asked, you know, let's see, Thursday or Friday, I was over there. They're doing a job down at the jail, and as soon as they get done, they're going to hit the roof.
Okay. Thank you.
And what was the police?
I'm sitting here trying to think. $2,100 was for...
For the best.
Computers?
No. Was it for the best?
No, computers.
Computers? They were replacing six?
Yeah, $375.
Yeah, and they were going to go, three of the computers will go in the squad room for the officers, the line officers, and three for detectives.
That's not enough. That's for the best. That's for the best.
You sure?
Yes.
No, that's coming out.
That's $2,100 is for the...
Okay, the computers is on the additional preparation we're asked for tonight.
Yeah.
This is for the best.
That was the remainder of the best happened today.
Yes, yes.
That's what I was lost, yeah. Public hearing, anybody want to discuss that? We've been taking everything for equipment out of Riverboat since we don't have any funds in any of the other line items. Not appearing, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion if you...
I'll make a motion, we pass pending ordinance 3155.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3155, taking $11,900 for a new roof on the street department, and $2,100 to complete the grant on the bootproof vests. Any discussion? I think we could call for a voice for it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend rules and consider it on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3155 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move forward.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3155 on third and final reading, placing $11,900 in the garage fund to review the roof, and $2,100 in the police equipment fund for the, finish up the vests on the addition of the grant. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Pending ordinance 3156, $1,740 for minor equipment into other equipment. This is in the police department. This is one of those things where I told you, we're getting to the end of the year, and we're transferring all over the place, trying to rob Peter to pay Paul.
I will be passed pending ordinance 3156 on first reading.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3156 on first reading, moving $1,740 from minor equipment into other equipment. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3156 on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to consider pending ordinance 3156 on third and final reading, on suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, you can consider it if you'd like.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to consider pending ordinance 3156 on third and final reading, placing $1,740 for minor equipment into equipment. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Pending ordinance 3157, this is a rezone of the six-story building that has passed the area planning, and they have brought it to you to put the final okay on it. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, sir.
And now, give your name. Most of us know you, but give me your name, your type, and what we're trying to do here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Steve Alexander with Prince Alexander Architects. We are the architects working for the developer of the six-story building at 1210...
1620, Illinois.
1620.
Illinois.
You can't get the numbers passed in like that.
I guess, no, man. As you know, the building's been vacant for a couple of decades, and as originally built as a factory, it's very difficult to put a factory in a six-story building. It's one of the reasons why it's so vacant. We actually came to town about seven years ago, working with the foundation on a different project, and became aware of the building and was interested in it. And over the years, we started working with the mayor more in depth, and with the executive director of the Community Education Coalition, and as everything has transpired, it made us accelerate our effort to get before the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority for their Section 42 Senior Housing Finance Program. Our applications are due November the 3rd, and that is a very voluminous application process for Section 42, and we're very close to having everything ready. The zoning commission approved the change of the zoning map, special exception, and variance of height and parking, and we're here tonight requesting you pass the ordinance to adopt those. So, if there's any questions, I can answer those for you now.
I believe that was unanimous the other night.
All votes.
You're on that.
Yeah, and we had a good meeting, and showed us a lot of the plans and everything. I'm fully supportive of it. It was, it looks like a good project.
Well, I tell all of our communities who work in, senior housing is an industry. There are real jobs that are created, expands your healthcare industry. When we were developing the redevelopment district plan, the president of the hospital came and was very supportive of our effort, and actually wrote the cover letter for that study. And so, if everything goes well, we get this done, we'd like to keep rolling with it and do more, more senior housing after that. But we've got to get the first, first patch of it done, and then see how we do.
Any further questions? This has been a long road, and I want to commend the Redevelopment Commission. They work with no pay. I've been in those meetings with them night after night, and they put a lot of work into this, a lot of effort. And Dan, we appreciate the support economic development has put into it. Everybody has, everybody's been supporting. So, it takes final vote from you folks tonight to get this off the road. It's all based on points, and we get a lot of points because of our, some of the issues we have here. We get a lot of extra points, and we should be able to pass this without a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm moving to accept pending ordinance 3157.
Second.
We have a motion to pass pending ordinance 3157 on first reading, accepting the recommendation of the area planning to make this area over there residential. Is there any further discussion? Before we vote, John, and I know you're the attorney for that board, did you have anything you wanted to say about it?
No, not at all. One thing I noted, and I think it was alluded to earlier, is it 1220 Illinois or 1620?
It is 1220. I made a mistake, yes.
1220 is correct. All right, well, I could have known.
That's a correct...
So, want to make sure we had what I was...
Right.
But that's all, all right.
Brad, are you sure you made a mistake?
Yeah.
Or you're just confused?
Well, you're allowed one a year.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, but that's the first one in the last ten.
I don't know about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With a favorable recommendation unanimous from the APC, I would like to make a motion we pass...
I think we have a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'm sorry, I'm old.
That's all right. That's all right. I'm older than you.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and it seems like everybody's ready, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
I won't screw this up, yes.
That's unanimous, so you pass that. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider pending orders 3157 on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3157 on third and final reading, on suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? We can move forward.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3157 on third and final reading. That would be that we adopt this zoning change, and we make that property residential instead of industrial. Any discussion? Anybody object out there? This is it.
When you might hear Scott Hill, when you might hear reply or...
The IHCD A Board makes their decision in the third week of February.
Okay.
Nothing moves fast.
Believe me, they have a press release that day, and so we'll see who selects it.
I see.
Okay, we have a motion, we've had our discussion. This is third and final reading, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
You pass that unanimously, and you've changed the zoning on that building to residential.
Thank you very much.
Good luck on the project.
Thank you.
Good luck, yeah.
Pending ordinance 3158, Councilman Nobby asked that be prepared an ordinance to remove the speed bump on 35th Street. There was confusion, there was one speed bump, there were two speed bumps, asked the superintendent of streets to take the one out, because only one was authorized. He took it out. Mr. Nobby asked that an ordinance be prepared. Mr. Nobby will give you the floor, so you can explain.
I was against it originally. I think we've had it for a while, and I think there are people on the council now that would be okay removing it. I'd like to see if we got that opinion on here.
Gabe, are you saying remove all the...
The speed bump, yeah.
Okay.
Further discussion before we, we're out there, want... Paul, you want to come forward?
I thought in the last meeting, your statement was, we will not bring this up until I have the representative from my district here.
I fully thought that your representative would be here tonight, because this would have been her last meeting. She's resigned as of the 31st of October, and I was as shocked as you did. She's probably not feeling good that she's not here. I really thought she'd be here tonight.
Right.
If the council wants to defer this until you have a representative in your district, I'm okay with it. This is a council meeting, not the mayor's meeting, if that's what they would like.
I see.
Counsel? I did promise that, but I thought Nancy would be here tonight. I'm sorry. She did not call me today. Yours was, she called and told me she's not coming.
I wasn't here the last meeting, and I guess it wouldn't be fair to ask me, because I voted against it the first time. So, I don't, I don't know how to answer you, I really don't. Mr. Paul, I appreciate you coming in properly, but I don't, I don't want to say, I don't want to answer that.
Okay, well, it was discussion, and Gabe asked that an ordinance be prepared to remove it. Didn't think it was necessary. And since, if any councilman or councilwoman asks for an ordinance to be prepared, it must be prepared.
Right.
It must be considered. So, I had it prepared. And I told him we would consider it when we had his representative here, because Nancy wasn't here last time.
Oh, okay.
But she did not tell me she wasn't going to be here tonight.
Okay.
I thought she was coming, because tonight would have been her last meeting. She's resigned as of 31st of October. And so, she's not here, and what he's saying is, he wants to wait until he has a representative in his district to consider this.
Your Honor, I believe you said a full council, and I, with only five people here tonight, I think we should wait till, there are seven people here, so I move, that we table this until the next week?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that, Frank. We've, we've had it this long.
Do you second that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I think we should have a full council here.
I agree.
Brad has made a motion that we table this until we have a full council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's what we'll do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does Nancy have a replacement?
Yeah, well, I don't know that, that's not my job.
Not yet, I don't know.
Okay.
Can I be a caucus?
The IT man is here for the city and county. Now, we're going to get into those computers I was discussing.
Okay, evening. My name's Michael King, I'm the IT director for the city and the county. We are in a spot right now where we need to get computers replaced in the CPD and the fire department. The fire department computers that they use for their reports are currently running Windows XP, which I'm not sure if maybe you're aware, but they stopped reporting that from Microsoft in April, which means that any security holes that exist in that operating system as of that day are still going to remain there, they're not fixing anymore. This allows that security hole where they're entering information like social security numbers, or security codes, or whatever else they might put in their fire reports when they're filing those, insurance information or whatever, it could possibly be leaked out, so we want to get that replaced. In the case of CPD, their computers are slow, looking to replace four computers for the fire department, six computers for CPD, primarily in the three detective computers, and the[1717.28] um, primarily in the three detective computers and the three in the booking room. Um, this will allow them to get their work done faster, simply. I mean, right now, um, I go over there and help them change a video for, for some problem where they've been handed, uh, video from a crime, and if it takes twenty seconds or thirty seconds for it to even load, that's thirty seconds to their waste in time. Um, pretty, pretty straightforward in my opinion. Um, the machines that they've got now are, I think, five to seven years old.
And how much were you saying it takes for these computer replacements?
The, uh, one that I got a quote on, um, looking about three seventy-nine, um, prior to shipping. Estimated shipping, probably about twenty dollars.
You were getting four hundred bucks a piece?
About four hundred bucks a piece.
And how many do you want?
I want to get ten.
Four thousand dollars.
Four thousand dollars. And then, starting next year, I want to get them on a rotation so that we don't get in the situation where we've got computers that are desperately outdated. So we're replacing two to three a year going forward, so that there's never any computer older than four years old, so that we don't get in the situation where...
Well, I got a question. David, uh, the gentleman said four computers for detectives. Is that all you need, David?
Three.
Three.
There's three for detectives, three in the squadron with...
Oh, I didn't hear that, okay.
... paperwork. There's six computers altogether.
You need six?
Yeah, well, yeah, we need six right now, but we'll have to have some more.
Okay, well...
The fire department needs four.
For what?
Um, they do their reports.
What, but four computers?
Uh, one for each fire station and...
Frank, didn't we just buy computers for fire trucks?
We, we did buy computers for the fire trucks twice.
Yeah.
That's for the trucks, not in the apartment.
Uh, those were on a grant about when Jim was here.
I'm sorry?
Those were on a grant for the hydrants when Jim was here.
Come on up to the podium.
Yeah, I, I just have questions. I, I...
Well, we bought those tough books for the fire trucks. They're in the fire trucks, aren't they?
Yeah, there's only three of them left. We give them the bend to use.
But when did we buy these? When did, you remember when we bought these parts?
We made a motion to buy the night before the fiscal emergency, and we struck them down.
We never did buy them. You're right, we never did buy them.
Yeah, they were never purchased the night before.
You remember what I'm talking about, Frank?
Yes, I remember, but don't we have just three fire stations?
Uh, one in, um, one in each outstation, and then one in the, um, assistant chief's office.
Yeah, assistant chief's office. So two, two in the main station, one in the outstation.
Okay.
So, it's actually the battalion chief's office.
And we can cover ours out of our budget. We have, we have the money to cover ours.
You have the money to cover yours.
Yeah. So I guess the, the only ones for the police department came out of that.
And so you need six?
Need six, yeah.
Okay, so you don't need to get any money?
No, just, you just need to know we're spending it, and we'll, we'll transfer it out of...
Because I thought, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it was a nice...
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
So that's down to twenty-four hundred bucks.
Yes, my bad, I filled it full.
Okay, along with that, I'm sure that you all have heard, um, we've become the heroin capital of the world, which is really not true. There's probably as much heroin in any other city our size as there is here. We used to have a whole series of incidents that's happened. Unfortunate incidents. We've had deaths, uh, we've had overdoses, and we've had a lot of problems. But along with that, it's evident in the last two or three years, our society has gotten meaner. And when it gets meaner in Muncie and Anderson, even in Carmel, it gets meaner in Connersville. Uh, our police have had guns pulled on them. Last week, they had a machine gun. Uh, they've had knives. They've had to take away from people. They've been roughed up. They've tore their uniforms. It's been pretty rough. And the police, you hear every day, where a police officer has to shoot somebody, or a police officer gets shot. And that's going to happen here just shortly if we don't do something. All of our officers are wearing vests. We used to have a couple of officers that signed out of the vest. Everybody's wearing a vest. We're taking as much precaution as we can. I've talked with the state police in Florida, the state police in Michigan, sheriff's department. I've talked to three police departments in Indiana. And they think we're running a high risk by not having a taser for the guys, so that they can avoid having to shoot somebody. We're asking tonight that you put the money out of the riverboat fund and buy five tasers, so that they can have a couple on each shift. And what that does is it allows them to stun the person and put them down while they cuff them, rather than have to fight with them, get close to them, or shoot them. We made seventeen arrests last Thursday. Eleven or twelve arrests, five the day before. All very, very serious. Yeah, we've got some people that are accused, I can't say their guilty, but they're accused, and they're in jail for carrying the drugs over from Dayton, Ohio. Uh, I told David, I want all the pressure we can put on these people every single day, and when you put pressure on people, they get mean. I want Connersville to be known as the place, hey, you don't want to do drugs down there. You're getting big trouble. And we're putting pressure on, let me tell you.
Dave, can you come to the podium, please?
There's some things that we can't talk about tonight, but we are forming a task force. Uh, we've done some other things. We got going. We're going to have some drug officers in place, and we're putting pressure on, believe me.
If I may?
Oh, right.
Um, the mayor said something about five tasers. Uh, first of all, I'm all in favor of non-lethal weapons. Uh, is, is that adequate, Dave? Would, would each, I mean, how would that work? At the end of the shift, do you leave the taser on, I mean, on the desk and go to the car, or what? How, how, how can you do that?
Each taser should be an issue to an officer who is qualified to carry the taser.
Okay.
We've asked for five because five's better than none. Uh, originally, you've got a quote on twenty, and, uh, that would basically, uh, uh, take care of the line. Uh, some officers have a, um, reservation about carrying them because they, it's a personal thing. Um, they don't feel comfortable with them, you know, so...
Can you tell me why, Dave?
I, no, not really. Not really. Some of them just don't want to carry it on their belt, because we carry that stuff on our belt, you know?
Okay.
And they have the same, uh, uh, some are older school, you know, from the, and they believe their, their pepper mace is fine and all this. But a non-lethal weapon is, is, uh, is going to have to be, you know, going to have to happen. And I know the city is in dire straits, uh, financially and everything. We're trying to stay above board and all this, and I just made a comment, well, we, we, probably it's twenty of them. Let's, let's, let's go for five right now, maybe in six months, go back and ask for another five, and to where we could, we could get, you know, uh, uh, an adequate, uh, uh, tasers to be issued to the officers, and that way it's one on duty and not one, an officer who is working who does have one. So that's, that's what I came up with for five.
Okay.
I got a quote here for twenty.
You must give us both quotes, the quote for five and the quote for twenty.
Well, we figured a quote on five, but I, I don't, I'd have to, I'm going to have to call and check because the quote is for twenty. So I imagine they're giving us a little bit cheaper price at twenty than they would five. But these are for carriers, for, for, um, cartridges, extra cartridges and everything else. It's six thou, this is four or five. Six thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents at the price for twenty. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably going to be maybe another, uh, thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, maybe something like that.
What was the quote for twenty?
For twenty? It's twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six, seventy-five, and, uh, I, I think they have a, uh, uh, there's another cost on here, too, for discount. There's a warranty on that also, uh, for, uh, each, there's a four-year warranty on them for this, this brand here, and it's four hundred, it's two hundred and sixty-nine dollars per piece for a warranty on these things. So that comes to a five thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents on top, if I read this right, on the twenty-one, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six. So as you see, they're, they're expensive, and, and, and usually they run around a thousand dollars a piece, but we're getting them at, uh, about eight, eight, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars a piece at, ordering them at twenty. So, you know, um, I, I don't want to, I don't want to break up, you know, uh, go over the, over the cost here, I mean, far as what the city is, is going to pay or give or whatever, but that's why I just asked for five. If we got ten, that would be even better, but I'm not expecting to go out here and, and ask, because I know I'm on the inside here looking out. I know what our, our status is on, on finances and everything else, and I know we're hurting for money, and that's what we got, the cuts we did last, uh, first of the year. So, so anything that, uh, the council would want to think about, uh, but I feel like we nearly need to get whatever, whatever the, the price or ever, however, the quantity of, of, uh, taser guns we would get would have to be repriced, you know, at five or ten, whatever, to get an accurate price and on everything. So what I've got here is for twenty at this price, so I'm, I, I know that's going to be just a little bit higher for less.
I don't have the ledger in front of me today, but how much do we have a riverboat, riverboat right now? When's our next draw?
One, uh, we just got the draw. Uh, I'm seeing one seventy.
I was thinking like one eighty-one?
No, we took some, we had some outgave on there. We just took eleven thousand out for that roof. We just took, uh...
And our next draw's when?
Next August.
This, this is my issue, okay?
There's the money in there to do it if you want to do it. That's not a problem.
This, this is my issue. This is what I said again about spending the city's money. This is a tool, okay? This is a tool I feel a police officer needs, okay? If some guy, gal, whatever, is whacked over and really don't have to shoot him with a forty caliber, that would be great. But, but I think you would need, uh, this is just me. I'm not doing sales pitch. I think you should need at least nine, three on each shift.
Well, I can't, only thing, only thing about that, Tom, is, is if whoever I issue to have to be trained and qualified. Now, I've got, I've got several officers that are already trained and qualified.
I didn't know that.
It wouldn't take much to train it, and, and to take one, pass one on to the other, uh, is really not feasible. It's something, it's a piece of equipment that goes on your belt. Once it's done on your belt, and take it off every night, it's really kind of a pain. Another time, it's something else. I don't want to issue one to someone that wants to throw it in his glove compartment in his car, in his police car. He needs to wear it and, and, and be able to use it and, and, and when need be. So that's why I'm not going to force any older officers to take one. Most of this enthusiasm, this is new law enforcement coming about, and most of them are the younger officers and, uh, that have a, a, a lot more enthusiasm and all this, not that they want to go out and, you know, uh, taste some of it.
No, I understand that.
And, you know, we've had shootings here before and where that could have came in handy, you know, and, and the times are changing. And everything the mayor said is true, and things, people nowadays are getting more meaner, and they don't care. And then look what's happening in Indianapolis right now, every day, and it's starting to spread out to, to the suburbs of Indianapolis, Marion County, on out into, you know, the areas of Connersville, Richmond, uh, even Cambridge City or Rushville or whatever. It's, it's just, it's just like a cancer. It's growing, and, and the drug tra, drug, drug world is alive and well. And in Connersville being centrally located in the triangle of Indianapolis, Cincinnati, and, uh, Dayton, Ohio, along with Hamilton, you know, we, we are getting fluctuation of, of drug trafficking coming from Ohio, uh, more so than we are from Indianapolis. Also, we got some stuff coming from Michigan. So this is something that we've, we've come, we've come, you know, we're dealing with. Um, I have been in contact, uh, in fact, the state police superintendent contacted me about a week and a half ago and offered assistance, which I've taken them up on, and will be, uh, I'll be meeting here with, uh, one of the representatives here by the end of the week, but we've got a plan. And, uh, and so you're going to see a lot more police presence in Connersville, Fayette County, and the surrounding counties, because we're going to try to curb this as quickly as possible, so...
Yeah, I, Dave, I guess where I'm coming from, as I said, I, I, I think this is a tool. I mean, you don't understand, it's extremely important. However, you know, I really don't think this should be an option. What I'm saying is, and I never said anything before, but like as a police officer, if we spend money for a vest, okay, then you'll wear it. My, my, my point is, and I, and Dan knows what I'm talking about. We came out of a, came out of a factory. This was, my God, thirty years ago. The company said, everybody's going to wear safety glasses. I don't care where you were. We're going to pay for them, and they're going to be prescribed. Couple of guys, no, I'm not going to, yeah, yeah, you are. And it, what I'm saying is not an option. If, if your employer requires you, you're a police officer, and you say, well, I don't want to wear a gun anymore. I don't think that's an option. I, I guess what I'm saying, I, I, I want our police department to be, have the proper tools, do their job, but if we purchase those tools, they need to wear those tools, is what I'm saying.
I totally agree with you, Tom. I totally agree.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, Dave, and I, again, I've always felt that they need those tools, and, and as the mayor stated, um, I'd love to see, I don't mean I'd love. I'd rather see someone tased than the other. I've said enough.
And, and not just because we bought them, but are we liable, are we liable for what else may happen if they don't use them?
Possibility.
Or if they get shot?
Possibility.
Well, you know, the procedure if a police officer shoots somebody, and we got to let that police officer on administrative leave, we got to go through all the investigation. Not only that, you lose a life. I don't want criminals or police shot in Connersville. So it gives them another tool that is less lethal than that gun. A gun is the end. That's, that's an extreme, and I have seen and heard enough in the last few weeks, the last few months. Uh, you know, I've been here seven years, and it's so different today than it was seven years ago.
It is.
It's just unbelievable. We struggle to, to try to keep police on the streets at night. Uh, we got twenty-six police officers, and we struggled to keep it, try to get everybody's vacation and time off.
Or twenty-five, yeah.
And, yeah, we lost one. Well, almost.
Yeah.
But anyway, we struggled to do it, and I think that the taser may stop us from having to shoot somebody or someone shooting one of our police officers. And I, I've been researching, and I think it's a necessary thing. I think we need to do it. We were going to try to go five because we just didn't have the money. I think nine would be a good number. Three for each shift, and we train three people on each shift to op, at least have one or two operating them on each shift.
Uh, we, anything's better than nothing.
I think you go ten, because I bet you'll see a price break at ten.
Well, and...
It's half the four.
Can we get a, a new estimate before we...
I can get a new estimate and bring it to you in the next meeting.
I'd like to advertise, we, we won't spend unless you tell us. You know, you authorize me to spend twelve thousand dollars to our building now, and I've never done it. We don't have, just because you authorize, we don't have to do it. I, I would like to advertise for a public hearing, both for these, uh, to get money in the, for the fire department, computers and these tasers all at one time.
Yeah, we need to, uh...
Give us.
Because we're running out of time.
Right, yeah, I, I think we, uh...
And, and if I got it figured right, uh, ten tasers would be ten thousand dollars roughly, and, uh, twenty-four hundred dollars for the, the computers. So twelve-five would get us where we need to be, if you allow me to advertise. Frank? Have I got it figured right, Lisa?
Frank, you're president of city council. What's your thought on ten tasers?
I think, I think ten is fine. I, I was willing to go along with his five because that was his recommendation, but if the rest of you think that doubling that number...
I think ten, I think so.
It's fine with me, and I'm sure he's not going to oppose that.
If, if it's, uh, pretty successful and everything else, I mean, I imagine, I know it's going to be, but maybe I could come back in, in six, seven, eight months and see about getting five or ten more or something like that, you know, whether, you know...
Well, you've got to get them trained. You've got to get them...
Yeah, I've got several of my officers already trained. I've got two county officers that we got. They're already trained. And I got, and I've got two others that, uh, that are, are not only trained, but they're instructors, so...
I think you all saw where our new dog picked up a syringe, and, uh, first time he was out.
Uh, that's true, and, uh, amazing, when we were having, uh, uh, our raids the other day, about a half a block, uh, from there, our regular patrols came up on a, a minor traffic stop, which turned into a, five people getting arrested, I believe it was. And, uh, and from there, uh, it escalated on some other things, so...
I can't give you any names, but I was in a restaurant the other day, and a man came up to me and handed me a check. He said, I want you to put this on drugs and a dog. And I put the check in my pocket. I thought it was a hundred dollar check. When I got down to give it to the girls, it was a thousand dollar check. People in this community are helping us. We're working together. Uh, we've got a lot of things going. We're going to, we're going to shut this drug operation down.
I, I want to, I want to commend, uh, the public, because, uh, the public, I went kind of like for a public outcry on television, and, and, uh, we have got a lot of a good response. We have a group that's, uh, the lady was here this afternoon, Kelly Robinson, she's kind of heading this thing up. She wasn't, uh, she didn't plan on doing this. She just kind of got put in that position, and, uh, she's been doing a, a pretty good job in, in motivating people and everything else.
Having a drug, uh, thing over here on the parking lot on, uh, November eleventh. Excuse me, November first, right over here. It'll be advertised. It's going to make people aware. Anyway, I don't want to dwell on this.
No.
I need you to give me permission for one or the other.
Twelve thousand, four hundred dollars to advertise for a riverboat?
Yeah, that'll take care of the computers.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. That would take care of the computers for the fire department and ten tasers.
Police department, the fire department, Troy said they have...
Excuse me.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to allow me to advertise for the next meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
You're on. Recession.
You want a recess? Sure. Uh, we will come to order at the second sound of the gavel.
David, you turn the air.
Everybody will come to order. Okay, we're going to start with our department reports. Chief Worthy's on here. ED Director, Dan Parker. Dan, you already gave a pretty good report, but you can... Dan Parker. Dan Parker.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I got a little handout here to give you, but before I do that, uh, Mary, you mentioned this evening before you, uh, began, and what, uh, Reverend Bill Lowery prayed for was Mike Quintus' mother, Helen Quintus, who fell here in Connersville, she went to a church social, got home, and got out of the car, and fell, and broke her finger, collarbone, she's had surgery on her skull, will be fresh in her brain, she's up at St. Vincent's, and she, we, as a family, would truly appreciate anybody's prayers in her behalf.
Absolutely.
Because it's, uh, it's real touch and go. I'd like to give each of you a little handout here.
Thank you.
Even though this is a, uh.
Thank you.
A county initiative, it affects Connersville, and I thought just for your information, you should, you should have some.
Thank you.
Uh, a little bit of, uh, knowledge regarding, uh, wind energy that is, if everything goes right, will come to Fayette County. If you notice that map, it shows the bulk of the area in Fayette County. We stand to get the lion's share of the wind turbines, and you're familiar with them, because you've seen all Randolph counties offloaded here in Connersville, off the rail cars, and then on the trucks, and then on up to Randolph County, and so we want that same experience for Fayette County. It'll be huge, uh, from an economic development standpoint, and also from a tax revenue standpoint. Uh, we stand to pick up almost all that we lost with the Visteon, and we're just really thrilled.
Yes.
That, uh, this could happen. Uh, that's a project that is ongoing, uh, because the county has retained, uh, an attorney, uh, it, it is a public, uh, matter, and, uh, it's one of those projects that I can talk about freely, uh, not so much on the other eight or nine that I'm working on. Uh, of course, we've, we've talked about Stan tonight, so we don't need to talk about that anymore, uh, that's another project that's coming to the, the public arena. So, uh, I don't want to take any more of your time, because I know the hour is, uh, going late, uh, if you have any questions for me regarding, uh, economic development in Connersville, I will certainly entertain them.
Do you know how many, how many, uh, wind turbines this is?
Gabe, right now, it's at forty-three, and that's on a first phase, there may be more than one phase.
It looks like it's mostly here in Fayette and a little bit in Rush?
I, I, I think the way the numbers stack up right now, it's forty-three for, for Fayette County, uh, twenty-seven for Rush, and then a much smaller number, I believe, for Henry County.
And it says the operation is currently targeted for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen?
Right.
Okay.
Looks awesome.
Dan, this little map, it looks like biggest location out by Bentonville area.
It's northern Fayette County.
Like, uh, I see County Highway, six hundred, okay, okay.
Right. It's, uh, you know, they've had the, the wind, uh, I don't know if they're anemometers or what they're called, that measure wind speed, wind direction, current, all that, and they've had those up in, uh, northern Fayette County for some time. The, uh, the landowners have, uh, formed a coalition, and they've been working together for a lo, really, the last six or seven years. I've kind of come into it late, in April was my first meeting with Next Era, and I think they've already formed a corp, I think it's the one for Fayette County, it's going to be called Whitewater Wind LLC, is our.
Cool.
So, uh, it'll be, it'll be great, we just need to keep going forward, and right now it's over in the county's hands to get everything passed over there, but I wanted to make, uh, the city council aware of it, because it will certainly be a, a great benefit to all of us.
Appreciate it, yes, it's good.
One thing I didn't want to say, um, I, I, we came to you maybe a month ago, and talked about, uh, county ready.
Work-ready community.
Work-ready communities, and we're in the process of being that, and all that means is, we're going to be work-ready, we're going to know how many people we got, we know how much energy we got, we know about this, we know about that, it's a big deal, uh, Henry County, Fayette County, Wayne County, uh, Winchester, Randolph County, uh, we're all working this in region nine, and working this real hard, and in most of those areas, uh, good, many of the mayor is being trained for this. I told Dan early on, since I won't be here in two thousand fifteen, or two thousand sixteen, it makes sense for him to be trained, so I've taken the money out of my budget, the mayor's budget, and we sent him on one training, and we're, we're going to send him on another one, there's three of them.
There'll be, there'll be three.
Altogether, and we're training him, so when the new mayor comes here, he'll already be trained, and then you can just train the new mayor, or whatever you need to do.
I think in our first training, we had, um, about thirty-five in that first academy, and there was one mayor.
Yeah.
And then there was a school superintendent, a lot of economic development directors, such as myself.
But I thought it was kind of stupid to waste the money on me, so we're sending him, and the city's taking care of it, so we are doing something, you know, we weren't able to give economic development any money this year, because we don't have any, but we are doing something, we're furnishing office here, and we're sending him on this training, and we're trying to do some other things. Okay, you done good.
Thank you.
I'm sorry you had to sit here so long.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
David Jones, Streets.
Good evening. As you see, what, our overtime is really low, and we've worked on a lot of vehicles this last month. Uh, tomorrow we start the, the Western Avenue project.
Are we starting out at the south or the north, do you know?
Well, we, we talked about starting in the south, the rear, because digging out to the railroad and so forth, the trestle.
And you're going to start leaf a week from today?
Yeah, twenty-seventh we'll start that.
Your cost, one hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents to operate your department in September.
Any questions for David?
How long will it be shut down?
Let's hope it takes seven working days, they think.
Really?
Seven days, depending upon the weather.
We got some good weather coming, so we're hoping to.
Will it shut down sections, or will it shut that down whole thing, and then?
We'll decide that, it'll be further in the morning, because just of the logistics of where we're starting and all.
If it works good, uh, we may shut the whole thing down, if we can do it in seven days, because of the weather.
We just plow through it and be done with it, instead of trying to route traffic and getting somebody hurt, ran over, whatever, and, like, it could be against somebody, but the, at the end, we always end up against somebody, they complain, but in the end, it's always better.
Yep. Be ready for a bad winter?
The salt hasn't come yet.
Tell them how much salt we're getting, tell them how much salt we're getting.
Um, quite a bit.
Six hundred and fifty tons.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
That won't last long.
So.
We had to beg to get that.
Yes, it's hard, hard to come up with.
Is the cost increased, Chris?
Yeah, the cost increased.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Too bad.
They know they can get the money.
Utility superintendent.
Thanks, David.
Come on, come on.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, monthly report, Sept- September, uh, attached is monthly revenue, uh, the fund balances in our claims for September, second sheet is our overtime, um, all that two hundred fifty-one hours, uh, one hundred eighty-seven was for putting meters in the first two weeks of September, that won't be there anymore, so that's, that's a good thing. Work orders, we have forty-nine work orders for the month, project updates, um, our digester is, um, finished, we have that emptied, we are doing some repairs right now, um, over the years, the weight of the pipe needs to be fixed, and, um, some bracing needs to be fixed, and we're in process of doing that, before we get that online, it might take a couple of weeks. Uh, we installed nine nine meters last month, we have three hundred sixty to go, our goal is to be completed by November fifth, and we're trying to get around thirty-five meters in a day, and they've been doing that for the past four days, so, uh, the numbers are looking good. Uh, Grand Avenue update, last couple of weeks, weather's been not appropriate, a lot of rain, but, uh, their, their goal is to get all the underground stuff done before winter, and I think we can still do that. Uh, any questions?
No. Brad, or Brad? Mike, I don't have a question, but I, I do want to thank you and Brad, I, I like this new report, it's, this is what you, you know what you've been doing, thanks, fellas.
Thanks.
That's all I got.
transfer stage, anybody not want to read?
Uh, no. You have a report, any questions?
Well, ask us some questions, come on, guys.
Ask me about the shred day.
When's shred day?
It, it was October the fourth, it was very, very cold, and we still had fifty-three customers, and I haven't got to tonnage back in on what we have, but it's, it's, um, people are getting acclimated to it by doing it twice a year, in May and in October, and it's, I think it's been successful. Thank you.
Fire chief, Troy.
Good evening. I'm a cold tonight, so excuse me. Um, we had a hundred and eleven runs, hundred and ninety-two hours on emergencies, uh, ten inspections, ten investigations, four pre-plans, fifty-five hours of training, um, eleven thousand dollars in damage that month, um, we finished up our hydrants in the city, we're doing hose testing, finishing that up right now, um, going over some of the things you talked about in this meeting today, I didn't take the, for public works, I got called up to Fayette Tool to do an inspection, um, kind of interesting, you mentioned them in your abatement, um, they're adding on, we went up there and did a partial inspection, they're moving into part of the building, I was up there today, um, for ZAG, and I was finished up an inspection, they did some work up there, so things that, there are some things going on in town, so, that was a couple of inspections that have been done. Any questions?
Total of cost for our last one, Troy, one hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents, the overtime was only eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents, so.
That's F L S A.
You're, uh, you're down quite a bit, I mean, you used to be around two hundred thousand all the time, so we appreciate the, you and all the fellows working together to keep the monthly cost down, thank you.
The guys are working real hard.
Yes, appreciate it, thank you.
Dale Coleman, he couldn't be here, he was, uh, working, um, Superintendent Parks got married Saturday, and naturally, she's not here.
She don't care.
Harold's here, we didn't get married.
Long time ago.
I asked her today if her husband was still there, and she said yes, so, that's a good thing to say.
You knew, huh?
Um, she prepared the report that she had in front of you, and I can answer any questions you have on that, if you have any, um, there's a couple of things we got, getting ready to start for, uh, church league basketball, uh, men's league basketball, and volleyball, getting ready to pick up in the Miller Building, and also on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, will be our Halloween party, so if any of you guys want to volunteer that night, it would be greatly appreciated, we're doing it from six to eight, and we're partnering with the Children's Bureau, which, uh, they have about twenty different agencies that offer things for kids, so people can talk to them that night in the bankroll, and come into the Halloween party that evening, so.
How kickbogged is it?
Kickball?
Yeah, how'd it go?
We didn't do kick.
Okay, that's a kick for this year.
No, we done the men's league soccer, adult soccer, it went really well, people were wanting to make sure we do maybe twice next year, so, and right now, adult, uh, adult dodgeball is going really well, so, so they're both going really well, so. Any questions?
Um, Dale, you called me about a church that wanted to use the four H building, how did that come out?
Uh, she hasn't got back to me, we have someone that's interested, and they don't want to mention just yet, um, about using the Roberts Building for a church service maybe on Sunday mornings, Sunday evenings, and Wednesday evenings, um, so, can't really talk about it too much, she wants to keep it kind of quiet right now, so.
It's kind of like what we did with Fuzzy Lake, be a general income, we got the bluegrass people up there on Friday night, uh, you know, and it gives you an income, pay the heat lights, water, all expenses.
I think it would be great.
Local works out.
Get it worked out, so.
Local, that's nice.
Any other questions? Thank you.
We were getting ready to, uh, this group, they take one of our two veterans to.
Honor flight.
Washington.
Honor flight.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
And, uh, all the buildings at the park were rented, they couldn't get in, so a week ago Sunday, I let them use the conference room, I came down here and kept it open, and they did the veterans in the conference room in here, that's all busy, we are at the park, we even share City Hall, so the park is very busy. John Ponce, he is.
Vacation.
Uh, away, I won't say where he is, old business, guys, you got any old business?
Skip Damon.
Uh?
You skipped Damon.
Damon, you want him to make a report? It's not, it's not.
I wasn't going to say anything.
You're welcome.
Uh, we had nine hundred and eight, uh, law reports, fifty-six citations, literal ordinance violations, uh, twenty-five warnings, uh, eleven, uh, injury accidents, fifty-seven property damage accidents, no fatalities, and ninety arrests, and, uh, the other side is self-reclamatory. I believe Fran, I think we had a little OPO last month also, so I don't know what that exact figure is, but I think that's in that.
And then one hundred ninety thousand, two forty-six, eighty-six for September, okay. What is that usually average?
OPO?
Yes.
Uh, usually, uh, probably about, about two-thirds of that, so I, I'd have to check, I don't know how many officers work and everything else, because it varies at times, and I, and also, it varies on how long they run over a weekend, or a week, or whatever, so, that Labor Day weekend, or, they, their Labor Day weekend would have been in there, so I know that.
Yes, okay.
So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Anything else under old business? Uh, under new business, Miss Lane's business, John Baker has some new business, and he and Francie, Fran, Fran Schomel, man, I can't even talk, our council president have been working on a project, and they want to report to you tonight. You guys got the floor, who's going to start?
John is.
Yeah, we've, we've been looking at, uh, an ordinance for the establishment of a city court in a third-class city, and, uh, we, uh, have checked into several things, including the, uh, oh, the feasibility regarding startup costs, and, which is relatively limited, believe it or not, also salaries for judges, judge, uh, bailiff, clerk, treasurer, all, all very much within limits, and, uh, but, uh, the statute is such that, starting in two thousand and six, a city court ordinance can only be adopted every four years, and that's, the reason for that, uh, is that the, uh, election is every four years for the city court judge, and Fran and I were scratching our heads, trying to figure out why it was every four years, and the mayor told us, well, because of the elections, obviously, so he was right, and, uh, so the, uh, city court judge, if an ordinance is passed this year, and it has to be passed this year, uh, the, uh, city court judge would run in the next city election, um, there, there's money to be made, the, um, um, city ordinance violations would be in city court, the, um, misdemeanors would be in city court, and the infractions that include all traffic violations would be in city court, and, uh, regarding revenue, uh, the, uh, court cost, uh, is, is an amount that's charged along with the fine, usually the court cost is much more than the fine, and the court cost is allocated to a great extent to the city, when you have a city court, so it's, uh, seems to be a money-making proposition, and as we all know, we need money, and the, um, we've talked to other city courts in Ice Town, Hagerstown, talked today to, uh, Martinsville, and one other, who was the other? Was it Hagerstown?
Yes, Hagerstown, yes.
And, uh, they're, they're very excited about it, they've been, they've had city courts for years, uh, city courts and town courts, and, uh, the police, to the extent that I've been able to talk to, they seem to prefer it because, uh, uh, there's no waiting, uh, cases are set, and, uh, the volume isn't so great that police have to stand in line and wait for their case to be heard, it can pretty well be done right through one evening per week, for example. Now, I know the city police have to go to the, uh, Superior Court and wait many times for a long period of time, just to get their case heard and sometimes it isn't heard then. So, uh, that would be an advantage. Uh, it seems like on these city courts, the state police like them. Pardon my voice, I'm having trouble. Yeah, the state police like them and the, uh, even the sheriff's department's like them because they, they like the fact that they know when their case is gonna be in court. They know, uh, it'll be heard that day and there won't be a wait. So, that, that seems to be, uh, the plus side. Downside is, there's a startup cost to some extent. You have to have some computers and you have to have some equipment, of course. But, uh, this room would be available for, for that use. And, um, the clerk treasurer could be the court, uh, clerk, uh, a policeman could be the bailiff. It, it depends on the, uh, the preference of the, uh, the judge and the, uh, chief of police and the clerk treasurer, he herself. We're, we're asking, or I'm asking, that you give me authority to, uh, get an ordinance together for your consideration.
Is there a state mandated, uh, salary for the judge?
Not that I'm aware of. There is a state mandate that the judge be an attorney. And that's only recently.
I think if they did establish a city court, uh, if you guys did, I think that you'd see the ordinance violations, uh, go up instead of writing a, uh, a speeding ticket or statute, you know, we can write under ordinance and it would, it is a hassle getting a, uh, Superior Court judge to listen to city court, uh, court cases and stuff like this. And I think if that would happen, you'd see police officers writing more city tickets than you would state tickets. Just wanna...
John? I have two questions. First, is your opinion, it would be, uh, fiscally advantageous for the city if we had a city court?
Well, it is for the other courts we've talked to.
Okay.
And, uh, there's a couple of variables. Uh, Hagerstown is near Interstate seventy. A lot of state police didn't make arrests on Interstate seventy. And Istown is also in that, uh, neighborhood. But, uh, we have a lot of state police in this area as well, as, as the mayor pointed out.
Well, and my second question, back in the early sixties when I was a teenager, did we not have a city court where the old fire station was at?
Yeah, I was a prosecutor in that court.
Oh, okay.
But, back in the seventies when I was prosecutor, I couldn't get a deputy to go, so I went. And, and I handled city court, which was very interesting. Doc Haley was judge, you remember Judge Haley?
Yes, yes, I do, yes.
Yeah, we, we had some interesting sessions.
Okay.
And it was, and, uh, we had a busy court. We, we met three times a week.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of activity back in those days.
Yeah, that's, well, that was my, actually, I ask if it would be fiscally advantageous for the city.
I believe so. The other courts tell us yes. But we had some nice talks this afternoon and, uh, they seem to think it's, uh, certainly feasible economically.
So, you're, you're asking permission to look into this? Is, is this what you're asking?
Well, we've looked into it. Fran has some points he'll make too, I think. I think what now, the next step would be to get an ordinance drafted.
Fran, what's your...
It has to be, it has to be passed this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fran, where are you at on this?
Well, I'm all for this. I think it's, uh, would be very, very good for the city. Martinsville, we spoke with them today. They've come from one side to Connersville. It's been very successful. They've had a city court for thirty years and, uh, they had nothing but good things to say about it. They meet on Wednesday evenings at five o'clock and their session, depending on, on the load, could go maybe two and a half, three hours, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
And they are going to provide us with, uh, the breakdown on the, on the court costs, as John said, as to how much we, the city gets, the state gets, something off the court cost also. But, uh, they're very supportive of it and I think it would be good for Connersville. It would take a burden, uh, relieve a lot of the burden, the pressure on Superior Court right now. And, uh, as the chief said, probably increase the, the number of tickets being written, which would be certainly good. So, we wanted to get a feel from the council, the folks up here before John went to, uh, to the job of drafting an ordinance, sample ordinance for us. So, uh, are you, are you in favor of proceeding?
From what John has said, you've said, yes, I am.
Debbie, uh...
I'm all for it.
Okay. Uh, Conning?
Yes.
Okay, John, is that all you need?
Oh, yeah, that gives me plenty, plenty to go on.
We've got some ordinances coming from other cities that he can kind of look at and see how they establish theirs. Uh, Fran's really been working on this for about two, three years.
About three years, right? And I was hoping to do it before and then we, we got the, the law that said you can only do it every four years. So, as John said, it began in two thousand and six, uh, current legislation. So, that was two ten, two fourteen. So, this is the year that we have to. If not, we wait till two eight, uh, two thousand...
So, we need, we need to take action before December thirtieth?
Yes, we need to pass an ordinance before the end of this year.
You don't have to have it. You can work next year establishing, getting it all going. It's gotta be passed this year.
Okay.
Yeah, and the judge, candidates will run for the judge job in the election and so on.
Fine.
Sounds good, man.
We appreciate that, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
All right, so John, John, you, you'll take care of that for them for the next time. We'll have some sort of ordinance ready for them.
I believe so. I'll go check about it.
Okay. All right, we've already talked about the Halloween party. Uh, the, uh, the drug rally is gonna be on, uh, November eleventh.
First.
First. I, I got eleven one and I keep looking at that eleven. It's the eleventh month and first day.
He's old, isn't he?
Okay. And, uh, over in the parking lot, uh, I think we got everything down to public forum and issue like, did I miss something?
Yeah, yeah, old business. On, uh, the Fifth Street stairs, did we find anything out on that?
The what?
Fifth Street stairs, you were to find out who put the fence cross. Did you forget?
Fifth, Fifth Street.
Steps going up the...
Was it?
Oh, no, I haven't. I, I have, but I've, I've been a little busy and I haven't had a chance.
I figured so, I was fair enough.
I was thinking, I was thinking, yeah, steps on Fifth Street.
Were you checking out? Someone's put a fence cross.
I'll write it down.
Anything else under old business? Okay. New business, come right up to the podium, ma'am.
I have a program I'd like to get started. It's, uh, called Animal Mastery. What it is, people get into a group and they help people, uh, take care of the animals and things like that. Here, there's a couple of pictures that I had. Pass them down. This is, uh, this was taken out in California. This is at one of the bits. And what this consists of is like a person that cannot afford the animal, this, uh, Animal Mastery would come in and help them. They take care of the animal and no matter, and if they can't take a walk and things, they come in and take care... And also, sometimes the, uh, vet, also vets come in, maybe help with shots and different things like that. It's all different kinds of things, even bears, for the dog, things like that. And I was wondering what you guys thought about helping people.
Okay, is this a group of people that start this or...
Yes, uh, it's a, it could be anybody, like you, like you want to help out. You can come and meet up and out and things like that. And we get, we help the people, in other words, we help the people in Connersville and surrounding counties to meet. That would, uh, to help them, like, say, like a family wants a dog, but doesn't, uh, whatever they... So, they're coming in and get, uh, help them, like, and Yosters tours, I've talked to some of them, they want to come in, churches is wanting to come in and things like that. These are, it's some of the places.
Would you be willing to head something like that out?
I guess so. I'm planning on having me to head of it.
Have you spoken to the Humane Society?
I've, I've talked to a few of those things and things like that. I've talked to a few people and get around the different ones. And the Humane Society is one of my, got to get a few of them and things like that. And we, uh, this, this here was pictures that I showed you, have a, this was one that was in, in California. With my old dogs, I don't have a birthday day. The old dog, you seen the picture? That is good.
The Humane Society, I would think, would be the proper organization to help be the core of this, right? And you work with them and...
We, we have a, we have a program, and I forget, what do we do it, in the spring or the fall, where we, uh, pet paws, help somebody?
Paws and park.
Pets for paws or?
Paws in the park.
Paws in the park and we raise a little money to help with animals. And what's the lady's name that heads that up? Come on, help with this.
Monia Ram.
Who?
Monia.
Do you know her?
Uh, no, I, see, I've...
She'd be a good contact person for you.
Well, I did hold some of these contacts.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give my phone number. My name is Nitra Smith. My phone number is seven six five...
You say your name is Deidra?
Nitra, N-I-D-R-A-H.
And your last name Smith?
Smith.
And your phone number?
Seven six five, five seven oh...
Five what?
Five seven oh.
Five seven zero.
Two five, four five.
Okay. Well, I think that's what you should do, to talk to the Humane Society and talk to this other lady. She's very interested. In fact, she helped us raise money for Bulletproof Fest for one of our dogs.
But this view, like, those outfits that the dogs has on there, as a matter of fact, I made that old dog outfit. I don't have the whole complete outfit now from my move. I have all these things behind. And, uh, these are, and I wanted to see about getting this for them, like, now, myself, when I have, I have these things, brings things too. Now, I don't, uh, they say, uh, cannot collect money on it because it's, it's like, it's gonna be like a free event for people to come and get sex.
Kinda like have a shower on a dog.
And, uh, there's different things, uh, they will be coming in and getting something like that.
Well, I think this group's all in favor of, of that. We have, uh, you know, we have Animal Control up on the hill.
That's what I'm saying.
I think they do a good job up there and they're always trying to adopt dogs out and catch them.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see, we try, we try to find home, help with them, we try to find home for dogs and things like that and different animals. I'm even considering, uh, Bible verse, uh, having with mine. This is the reason why I would think about the wild animal, dog, so, like, if, it says that animals will lay down, you like to lion, things like that, with, you know, lambs and things like that. I'm considering about that also, along with mine.
Well, I'm certainly sorry you had to wait all evening, almost two hours, to, to tell us that, but public forum's on the end of the agenda and, yeah.
Well, I was saying, supposed to be here last week.
Okay, I know Melissa said you were coming last week.
Yeah, but, uh, I posted, checked.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I'm good.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Deidra. Anything we can do to help you, let me know.
Well, okay.
Okay, David, you wanna give her my card?
Yeah, I'll look at it.
I received it, thank you.
What you think about it? But this was, this is from, uh, Jim, a guy out in California. And as a matter of fact, this guy right here on the corner, right there, can't see it too good, so that's at night, that's him.
Okay.
And that's taken in, in, uh, at night because they have him at night. You're about six, seven o'clock at the evening.
Looks like a good event.
So, I'll get all this together and...
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, I've got people even wanting to put him up in the, the windows.
Awesome.
So, we just get it together and...
Sounds like you're interested and you're a good lady. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll get her card.
He's gonna get you one of my cards. It's got my phone number on it. You can call me or, okay?
I'll, I'll reach out here.
I'll load it. I've got Jim's, uh, numbers and things like that. They, oh, they could also call, uh, go online, uh, animal, don't go with, uh, canine dimension dot com. That gives them more information of what they want.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming in and making us aware. Is there anything else tonight under, uh, Miss Laneus? Uh, I did wanna mention, we got all the cameras running in the park, uh, and we're watching very, you know, that we've had some damage in the bridge and we had some people who are trying to do some things in Palan and we got the cameras in the park all working and we're watching it, so... Daryl, right? They better be careful because we can see you.
We can see it now.
I got something I'd like to bring up.
Yeah, go bring it up.
Uh, if I would. Um, in our packet, there was a letter of resignation from Councilwoman Stevens to the Democrat Party chairman, and I would just like to say, uh, Nancy, it was, it was privilege serving with Nancy up until she had some health issues. Um, she never missed a meeting, kinda like Fran Schomel, and, uh, I will miss her. Thank you.
I wanted to speak, address. I wanted to thank Nancy also for her longtime service to our community and for all the help she gave me and I'll miss you, Nancy. I hope you get to feeling better.
Thank you for your service. I appreciate the, uh, time you invested.
Well, Nancy, you, uh, you spent twenty years, I believe, in the, uh, assessor's office. And if I've got it calculated, nine years, am I right on the city council?
I think she's spent twenty-two, twenty-four years.
But nine years on city council here. She's in her second term, say, well, she's seven years on city council, same as I.
Right, seven, yeah, same as I.
Okay. We appreciate that and had I realized that, uh, I want, try to present a plaque to her eventually when we can get her down here, maybe, uh, so, maybe you can get her down here, Debbie, or...
Yeah.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay?
I know Nancy well and it's been a pleasure working with her and, uh, she always put the, the folks out there first as long as decisions, yeah.
I've known Nancy and John for a very, very long time and I just know she's always, um, had, uh, the citizens' best interest at heart and, um, I appreciate that and she was a good role model, so...
Is there anything else on there, Miss Laneus?
I'd like to mention one thing about Nancy.
Okay.
I worked with her for years, especially at the county assessor's office, and she did, she was excellent at Indiana inheritance tax. And, uh, she knew the law when I think sometimes the attorneys didn't.